Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order tonight being the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 budget. We are at the Higgins Middle School library. We are beginning the meeting at 5:37. The meeting tonight is being recorded and will be televised live on Channel 8. The meeting is also being recorded tonight by the PBD School Committee's recording secretary, Marja Macarelli. Unless there's some questions or comments to open up the meeting, we can go right to public comment. Anybody okay with that? At this time, we'd open it up for any public comment. Anybody would like to speak on the budget? The microphone is now open. Yes, come on up, Ms. Barrett. Actually, I'm sorry, before we begin, could we all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Before I go to Ms. Barrett, we need to...
Motion to receive.
Second.
Further motion for receipt of the fiscal year 2020 budget by Mr. Huckman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor of receipt? That's a vote. Okay, Ms. Barrett, welcome, please. If you could just introduce yourself.
My name is Jessica Barrett, and I'm a seventh grader at the Higgins. Good evening, Mayor, Superintendent, and School Committee members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Barrett, and I'm a seventh grade French student here at the Higgins Middle School. Unfortunately, the School Committee has decided to take away French due to budget cuts. I have been taking French with Ms. Korsland for a year now, and it has truly been one of the most beneficial classes I've taken. I have learned so much in her class this year. I look forward to going to French class every week with her. It would be so sad to see such a wonderful teacher leave our school. It is confusing and frustrating that the School Committee has voted to keep Italian and cut French. Ideally, it would be nice if we could keep both languages. However, my research shows that French would be more useful to our curriculum. I have researched some data to present comparing the two languages. One very important fact about French is that according to Forbes.com and multiple other reliable web sources, it is forecasted to be the most commonly spoken language in the world by the year 2050. FluentU.com states that it is the fastest-growing language in the world. There are currently 275 million French speakers around the world today, while Italian only is spoken by 63 million. In the United States, there are about 1.6 million French speakers. Italian is only spoken by 709,000 people in the United States. Many people seem to believe Spanish is spoken in more countries than French. These people would be surprised to know that Spanish is only spoken in 20 countries around the world, while French is not only spoken in 29 countries, but is the official language of all 29 of those nations. While many other nations have people who speak Italian, it is only the official language of four countries. If you look up most commonly spoken languages in the world, French consistently ranks around number five. Italian does not even make it onto these lists. Four of the seven continents have countries in them that have French as their official language. Only one out of the seven continents can say that about Italian. French is a much more common language in the world, and it is far more useful than many people believe. At the Higgins Middle School, the number of French students exceeds the number of Italian students. There are 242 French students and 219 Italian students. Even the numbers at our school prove more people speak French. The student body at Higgins has created a petition to keep French. So far, we have received 856 signatures, and this number continues to grow. Parents have also signed this petition and have written comments such as, "My daughter loved French. She was so shy, and French class changed all that." Kids have wrote comments such as, "I am signing this petition because it is important to be exposed to the different foreign languages at his young age. French is a major language of international communication." For all these reasons, I respectfully ask you to please reconsider this budget cut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Very well done. Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward? The microphone is open, please.
I'm Valerie Smardios, and I am the Special Education Coordinator at PBD High School. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Murtagh, and elected School Committee members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As a proud alumni of PBD Veterans Memorial High School, I am a PBD resident, a voter, a taxpayer, and a child of a former special education, of a PBD High School teacher. And I am also a proud member of the PBD Public School System. I would like to speak honestly and from the heart. When I was a student in 1979, PBD High School received the first 10-year NEASAC accreditation. It was unheard of at the time, and the students and staff were related. Now, many years and accreditations later, PBD High School is preparing to secure a NEASAC accreditation once again. Yet, an important position has been cut at the high school: one dean of students. The dean of students position has, does, and will play a significant role during this process for the accreditation. May I ask, what happens if we do not get this accreditation? What happens to our students? But then what happens to our property values? I feel that there's been a major oversight in what this dean of students actually does during the course of the day and how it directly impacts our students' progress. PBD High School is more than numbers. It is a vision. We collectively are about getting students ready to be effective communicators, global thinkers, problem solvers, self-managers, to name a few. These great visions do not happen in a vacuum. They happen with a well-equipped team. I am sure you understand how complex the position of the dean of students is, and I hope you understand how this position transcends across other departments, including the Special Education Department. Each of these deans of students, whether the A-house, B-house, or C-house, come to their special, student special education meetings. They present, and they know their students. With the potential loss of one dean, it appears as though what you are asking is that these positions become only evaluators and enforcers of discipline. It will limit their ability to proactively interact with their students, as they do presently. I am concerned for our students. I am concerned as a staff member, and I am concerned as a taxpayer. No cuts are easy. We understand this. This cut, however, is detrimental to the overall well-being of our students at PBD Veterans Memorial High School. And I am urging you to reconsider the position of dean of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smardios. Mr. Quist?
Good evening. I'm Mr. Quist. I'm the Director of Guidance of the PBD Public School System. And last evening, I felt that the high school administrative team spoke very eloquently about their various roles that they have in regards to the safety, both physical and emotional, of all our students and staff. And I just wanted to add my voice from a slightly different perspective. And I'm not as eloquent as they are in speaking, and so I took a few notes down, so I don't, hopefully, don't go off on a tangent. But a loss of a dean of students at the high school does not just mean that each remaining dean of students would have approximately 700 students in their caseload versus right now approximately 470. I think where it's more of an impact is the collateral fallout. It means that the effect of this prompt intervention to deal with issues with our students, from academic to behavioral, to a wide variety of things that adolescents go through as they transition not only through their age, but into a school system and then beyond. I think they're so interrelated that when one part, whether it's academic or attendance, becomes an issue, it transcends through all of that. And I think their ability, and our ability as a school, to be able to impact that more directly and more quickly is greatly compromised. The school-based teams, I think, are becoming very effective at the high school, where, for example, there was a meeting today between one of the deans, one of the counselors. Based on that, a parent reaching out, the teacher reaching out recently, that was taken care of almost immediately this morning, where if the numbers are at a much larger scale, I don't know if those interventions will happen as rapidly. And I think what would end up happening with such large numbers is that we will be working and dealing most immediately with the fires and with the major crises that are occurring versus trying to be more proactive in making the interventions when they're not a crisis. Because the bottom line is, is that if a student or a family is in crisis, learning is not taking place. And part of our role, which has become more and more over the last 20 years or so, both as school counselors and as deans of students, is that we need to work collectively as a team to provide those interventions in order for our students to be successful. We owe them that. And I feel that a loss of a dean position, again, is not just a matter of numbers, but it's a matter of us being able to deal with effectively and promptly issues that come up within the school day. And I want to, I know you have very difficult decisions to be making, but I felt it was important enough for me to at least express the importance of their role in the school for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could take a moment, and I know many others would like to speak, and some of the comments I've made in past meetings as we've worked through the budget, but certainly this has been a very difficult one, and we say that every year, there are different challenges, different increases that have to be dealt with. This year was very difficult because we experienced a very large increase in special education costs, transportation, health insurance, among others. In addition to the regular increases that we always prepare for, for salary increases, steps in lanes, which all of our teachers, we've negotiated, and all of our teachers have earned. But these costs were much heavier than anticipated, and it's had an effect not only on the school budget, but budgets across our city. Each of our city departments are going to feel the impact of some of these increases, and we've had to work our way through them. When we sit down, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but certainly when I sat down to kind of review our numbers, we, a number of positions we had to add this year, certainly special ed, there were a number of positions added, but they were very difficult decisions that we had to make. One of those decisions was the unit director position, dean of students, rather. I was a unit director when I was in high school at PBD. Very difficult decision, and, you know, we look at the high school, we see that the numbers have gone down, but there's very real work taking place. Being an educator now is not all about just education, but there are so many social needs that all of our students have. And we're very fortunate that all of you here have taken on that challenge and are willing to step in front of our kids and work for our kids in their families in so many ways. It's been very challenging, and at the end of this, we are going to have to make some difficult cuts that we've been talking about now for a number of weeks. But the dean position is one that has troubled me, and we had a number of speakers yesterday that spoke eloquently about it, and even already today. We sat down, Ms. Murtagh and I and our finance team, to kind of try to work some numbers. I would feel comfortable in reducing our health insurance line to potentially bring back another position. My feeling would be, it would be a dean of students position, but certainly that has to be decided by the School Committee. But I think that, although risky to our bottom line, I think could be handled and withstood by our budget. I would like to propose a discussion on that now, or if the committee would like to wait, you certainly can do that. But that's just my feeling I wanted to share. I haven't had the chance to speak to the members of the board on this. This was something that we were working diligently on today, trying to find some additional money that could be used in some way in our budget. And I would feel comfortable offering that as an acceptable risk to potentially add back a position. Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Difficult night for everybody in the room, including the audience and the committee members. This has not been an easy budget. It's my 10th budget, has been one of the most difficult budgets that I've experienced. I voted against the reduction of the dean position. I would, if I could, under the Robert's Rules of Order, move to reconsider that, but I can't. I think what you're suggesting is appropriate, and I would certainly be in favor and support taking, whether it be an additional risk, and we're looking at other things later on to reinstate the position of the dean at PBD Veterans Memorial High School.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Any other comments or thoughts at this time? Mrs. Dunn?
I understand the complexities of this, but I actually think that, in my opinion, we should proceed with the public hearing to allow people to be heard, and then to take up our discussion and then our votes on the budget when the public has completed their comments. That's just my opinion. There isn't any real protocol with a public hearing, as far as I know, as far as taking votes in the middle, but I do think, you know, there are a lot of people here who may be speaking on other issues as well, and we probably ought to let them all finish and then take everything, you know, together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any other comments at this time? Okay. Why don't we then proceed, and anybody else would like to come up and speak, please? Yes, sir. Welcome. If you could just please introduce yourself.
My name is Brandon Lampron. I am a PANS graduate, PBD Alternative Night School.
My name's Kai Everett. I currently attend the PB High Night Program.
My name is Gustavo Cruz, and I also attend the Night School Program.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much. So after talking with Mr. Haxsham, he decided it was best for his students to come and represent the program. So I just wanted to say that the PANS program has not only given me a second chance, it's taught me many valuable lessons, many of which I would use to credit my success today. It was about seven years ago when I joined the PANS program. I combined between my freshman and sophomore year, I had about over 180 absences. When I joined the program, I had 22 courses to pass, and I was far behind all of my classmates at the time. I worked continuously through the school year and the summer for over two years, and five years ago, I had the opportunity to walk across the stage, to get my diploma, and make a speech at the Kylie School. I have seen many of my classmates benefit from this program, many of who would not have a diploma without it, and many of who would not have been able to graduate like myself if I didn't attend the program full-time. I attended it full-time and throughout the summer. I would attest to say conventional schooling is not for everyone, and I'm just here to put a face to the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is Kai Everett. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and all Night School Program students. I believe cutting the program in half would greatly depreciate the help the program provides for students that have fallen behind. For some students such as myself, it's the last stretch, and we need all the time we can get to get to where we need to go. And having a night school full-time of the week, four days, really helps students get where they need to go, considering they're falling behind in credits. But I believe that keeping the school the way it is, or the Night Program the way it is, would greatly help the school and the students.
Thank you.
Like I said, my name is Gustavo Cruz, and I'm a sophomore at the PBD High, and I attend the Night School Program. When I first, when I was at PBD High Day School, I was never able to wake up early enough to go to the school. So when I talked to my dean about the Night School Program, it really helped me when I first started going, because when, in Day School, I was never able to, like, make up my work. I was always falling behind, and I just could never really push myself to, like, do the work. So when I first started going to Night School, it was, it was a change because I saw the difference that it made in me, because I actually started focusing more and really doing my work. And like, I feel like if this school budget stuff thing would, to cut down on the Night School, it would affect some people that do go to Night School, because, like Kyle said, it's the last stretch for us. That's it.
I've been in their shoes before, so I understand. Without Mr. Haxsham reaching out to me, I don't know where I'd be in life right now. So I'm very grateful for the program, and I'm grateful for your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank each of you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Isabel. I'm a grade five teacher at the Welch Elementary School. Thank you, Mayor Bentencourt, Superintendent Murtagh, and all the other distinguished members of the PBD School Committee for listening to my thoughts and concerns this evening. I come here tonight to ask you to reconsider cutting one classroom teacher from the Welch Elementary School. I have been chosen by my colleagues to speak this evening and share some of our thoughts and concerns regarding the cuts that are being proposed at the Welch. After pushing our emotions aside, we have come to accept that some difficult cuts must be made. We understand that and respect the difficult decisions you've had to make so far. Although it will be difficult to lose three Title I reading tutors and one trauma specialist, the dismissal of one of our third-grade teachers would simply devastate our learning community. Having 26 students in one classroom from an affluent community would be difficult. But having 26 students in a classroom from a school where half the students live in poverty, 64% have high needs, 25% whose first language is not English, and 15% who have learning disabilities would be detrimental to the attention that we must give every student at our school. You see, the school, the students at the Welch are different from the students at the other seven elementary schools in the district. At the Welch, our classroom changes daily. Students move into PBD from areas such as Brazil, Dominican Republic, and Puerto Rico, to name a few. We have homeless families being shifted in and out of shelters, families escaping domestic violence, parent or family member drug overdoses, and foster care. Currently, we have 68 students who receive therapy for mental health issues, more than 40 children involved with the Department of Families and Children due to neglect and abuse in their homes. There are more than 25 children who are homeless, in foster care, or living with issues involved with the opioid crisis, or are plagued by the immigration crisis in our country. This year, we have had at least five situations where students have either hurt themselves or their caregivers. To date, we have had five parents die. Many teachers work with one or two children who face similar issues throughout their teaching career. We at the Welch support students and families through these traumatic events on a daily basis. This does not include the many language barriers our families and staff face daily. There are over 80 English-language learners from around the world who arrive in our office on any given day throughout the school year. These families feel intimidated in a community where everyone knows each other and where everyone can advocate and stand up for their children during difficult times. It is nerve-wracking for our families to speak out at a public forum such as this. Their biggest problems are issues surrounding their basic needs: employment, transportation, roofs over their head, and providing food for their families. When we think about taking one classroom teacher, three Title I reading tutors, and one trauma specialist from our building, we ask you to reconsider. We ask that you consider reinstating the third-grade position at the Welch. Otherwise, we feel we will be contributing to a system that has already failed our families and their children so many times already. Please leave this evening and ask yourself who you are taking from. Remember that the children at the Welch are different from the children who attend any other elementary school across the great city of PBD. Thank you once again for listening and empathizing with our students.
Thank you.
My name is Laurie Brad. I am a third-grade teacher at the Welch. I have taught there for eight years, and before I was a teacher there, both of my own children went through the building and have gone through the PBD School System. So just wanted to give that little background on me. I want to take us back two years ago when there was another tough budget to go through. And the third grade then at the Welch started off with three almost maxed-out classes. My class at the time had 26, another class had 24, and I think the other one might have been a little bit lower, 22, 23. But still high numbers for our building with the needs that Kim had just mentioned. And during that budget process and throughout the summer, as numbers kept getting analyzed, because we know that the budget keeps getting looked at constantly, we kept trying to advocate for an additional fourth-grade classroom, because historically, our grade in particular gets a very fair influx of students throughout the year. It's kind of like a revolving door in our building. You know, at 9:02, I can get a call any day saying, "Mrs. Brad, you're getting a new student today." And so I'm like, "Okay, let's just get Mr. Beard on the line to get a desk down here." So that's kind of how we roll. But, so we knew that that was coming, and we kept asking, "Please consider opening another class, because we desperately need it." And it did not happen over the summer. So even with all the social, emotional, English language, special education needs, and we know that everyone was very mindful of that, it just wasn't in the numbers at that time to open the classroom. So we were bracing for having those classes of 24, 25, 26 with the needs that we have. And so thankfully, two weeks into the school year, something happened, and we were able to get the fourth classroom to open. I think, you know, we had some walkthroughs and seeing the true needs of not just numbers on paper, but what the reality looked like in our classrooms. As excited and thrilled as we were to finally get the fourth classroom, it was a mixed blessing to get it two weeks into the school year. It was actually 10 days into the year then when we got the news. What happened was, the teachers and staff had to go into a room with guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, principals... principal, and administration, and to think, "Okay, how do we now take these children that we've come to love in ten days and shift them into a fourth room?" Then what ended up happening was that students who struggled with trust issues to begin with because of their home life, children who have anxiety and abandonment issues, were once again feeling discarded and unwanted because now their brand-new teacher didn't want them. "Why does, why can't I stay with this teacher? Why do I have to go to a new teacher?" And that wasn't the case because we could keep all of them. But... So during this time, what ended up happening at the Welch was that many of the students were prone to crying. And many were frequenting the guidance department, the principal's office, just trying to make sense of why this happened. And some students, even months after going into the fourth classroom, ended up rejoining their original class that they were only in for ten days. Now, another thing just on a technical side is when that class opened after school was in session, what ended up happening was the pool of teaching candidates that were available two weeks into a school year is not the same pool of candidates that you have that go through summer interviews. And the unique challenges that we have in our building, we really needed to have a teacher with trauma-sensitive skills, able to differentiate ELLs, special education, and a lot of behavioral and high-achieving students. And, but we were left with a pool of teachers, you know, those few weeks into September, that had limited experiences. A lot of them had only had student teaching experiences. And as I was telling one of the teachers in my building, I was so thankful to come into the Welch after having ten years of teaching experience because I don't think that I could have faced some of those challenges as a young teacher. So I just want to kind of end with, as you are going through all of your very mindful thoughts about the budget, I am hoping that you reconsider closing that third, third-grade classroom. With that high level of need in the classroom, that third classroom is imperative to provide the level of needs of social, emotional, and academic support to our students. To date, there are just fourteen special education students slated to go into two rooms, and that's just one sliver of the many layers of students that we have. We hope that you reconsider keeping that third-grade classroom sooner than later. Because having witnessed firsthand that significant emotional stress that opening a classroom belatedly had on our students, it's just heartbreaking to watch. And opening one later puts every, and not opening one at all, puts all of the learners at risk for not having that appropriate learning environment that's needed for them to be succeeded, to be supported and to be succeed, to be successful. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratt. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak? Microphone is open.
Good evening. Katie Millman, Visual Arts Department Chair at PBD High School. First of all, I just wanted to start by thanking the committee and the mayor for reinstating the Visual Arts Department head position a few weeks ago. And going through this process, I've realized how important it is to get information from multiple perspectives and to not just look at the numbers, because it is so much more than just numbers, as we have heard from everybody tonight who has spoken so far, that there are so many other things to take into consideration. And to, I just urge the school committee and central administration and the mayor to go into the buildings, speak to the teachers, speak to the students, hear the voices of the people who are in the trenches every day dealing with the issues, because every position within this community, within this school district, is essential to the learning of all the students in PBD. And investing in the schools is investing in the future and it's, it is raising the property values of those that live within the community if we have a strong public school system to foster and nurture the students that are in this community, who are the future and the next generation. Going back a little bit, when students found out that my position in particular was going to be cut, they asked, "Ms. Millman, what can we do? What can we do?" And I said, "Use your voice. Be an effective communicator. Speak up. Don't be afraid." And so they wrote letters. And these were unprompted. They did this on their own. And I have about twenty letters that I'm going to give to Mayor Bentencourt that they wrote and just saying what the visual arts meant to them and how it met their specific needs for what they were dealing with in their life. And every student has a different need and every position within the district is valuable. And I just ask that going forward, we hear the voices of everybody from multiple perspectives and not just think about the numbers on paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Millman. Anybody else would like to come forward? Microphone's open. Come on down, Amber. Well, welcome. And if, once you get settled, if you please introduce yourself.
I'm Amber Karakopoulos. I'm a sophomore at the high school.
I'm Noah Christopher. I'm a junior at the high school.
I'm Jess Basilar and I'm also a junior at the high school. Our school, we've been aware of like, maybe like a rumor going around that our history teacher, Mr. Myers, could maybe be affected by the budget cuts this year, and we wanted to just share our feelings about him as a teacher and how he's impacted us.
Yeah, so the most major like reason why we want to keep Mr. Myers, or like I do personally, is because he's like, he like teaches kids in his classes more than just the curriculum. So like, there were seniors in my class who like, they were like scared about college and like what they were going to do later in life. And he took them to the back of the classroom, like one day. He like devoted a whole day to this. And he talked about what they're going to do later in life. And also, he inspired me in his, well, I'm still in the class now and I have been for less than a semester. And he's inspired me to take economics as a major in high school, in a college, sorry. And also, he's a three-sport coach and like all the kids at the high school love him. We have a petition with like, what, two-hundred-and-fifty signatures? Two-hundred-and-twenty-six signatures. And there's, I haven't met one student at the high school that hasn't loved him. Like, I think he's the favorite teacher at the school by all the students. And we all understand that cuts have to be made, but I feel that he's too impactful of a teacher to get rid of. And we appreciate the consideration and hope that something can be done about this.
So about the petition, so when we heard about this, we knew like, obviously, we didn't want to just let it happen. You know, we don't have all the information, but we had an idea that maybe like our teacher was in danger of losing him from the school. So we sent this petition around and everyone, just when they heard about it, they were like, "Let me sign it." Like, "I, like, I can't have Mr. Myers be lost from this school." We had like two-hundred-and-twenty-six people sign it and like we could have gotten more, but it just, there wasn't any time and like, we understand like you guys have like very limited options, but like the cut like shouldn't be made to like Mr. Myers. Like, his class is just so enjoyable. He just has such an impact on our school. Like, he's the newest teacher to this school and I can't even tell you, like, everyone loves him. Everyone knows his name. Everyone just knows, he just cares about us like on a personal level. He isn't just trying to teach you history. He teaches us like life lessons and like makes us like better people like walking out that door. Like, every time I walk out of his room, I'm a better person than I was like twenty minutes ago. And it's like, we're not here to like try and make like someone else lose their job rather than Mr. Myers. It's just sad to have like anyone lose a position, but it just needs to be known that like many students like would be devastated to like lose him from the school. And so like, I'm not a morning person, but having him first period, it just makes my day so much better. It just starts off like such a good day. And like, many people in my class agree, like, when everyone heard about him being in jeopardy, just the whole word went around like, "I'm going to be so upset. Like, we can't lose him. Like, what, what can I do to help?" So he's just not like focused on teaching you things. He wants you to become like a better person and like actually teach you things that you're going to use in life. Like, everyone talks about him. He's a track coach as well. He's a soccer coach. He just has bonds with people that aren't even in his class. And when like you picture a teacher that like donates all of his like compassion and time to a school, like, you picture Mr. Myers, like, and he doesn't teach history. He just, well, he does teach history, but he just he wants to get you ready for life. And he just doesn't care about grades. He cares about making you a better person.
I have to say that it's really hard to come here and just talk about one teacher that's being jeopardized because I know that many are at risk for losing their job. But it's very easy to speak on behalf of a teacher that's brought so much joy into my life personally. As mentioned before, when Mr. Myers came to our school, his presence became loved and welcomed as soon as he stepped foot into the building by those within his class and beyond his classroom. As mentioned before, he made the effort to make a personal connection to his students, as I know many teachers strive to do. But my connection with him went beyond what I had to learn in his economics semester class. When I didn't have room in my schedule to go visit my guidance counselors, it's very hard to make time during the day to go see them. They have busy schedules, as do all the students. Mr. Myers was open for me to go into his classroom and discuss what I was going to be scheduling my classes for the upcoming year. He was open. He opened his doors to me so I could talk to him about the colleges that I was going to visit in the upcoming weeks. He opened his doors to talk to me about what I'd look for in a school. Whether it was undergraduate populations, the distance from my home, whether it was the major that they offered, whether it was the class-to-teacher ratio. He opened his doors for me, whether it was after school, beyond the contracted days that he had to stay after. And he opened his doors to me, whether it meant he had to lose his lunch hour to talk to me about this. I know that he didn't just open his doors to me, but he did for many other students as well. That's what, that's what comes with his presence, is joy, compassion, time, dedication, that all goes into his job. And I understand that many teachers are also facing this risk. But it's easy for me to say that a loss of Mr. Myers at PBD High is a loss to me and it's a loss to all of the other students that he has impacted. So thank you.
So thank you for hearing us out. It is sad to have any teacher or any department or anybody being affected by this budget cut. But we just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of how much Mr. Myers impacts us and just, he's the teacher you would want at PBD High and he's a teacher everyone should be like. Thank you.
So I just have another thing to add. Beyond me losing Mr. Myers, I am also facing the risk of losing German III at the high school or the entire German program. I am one of the very few students enrolled in German. I have been in a conjoined class since my freshman year. My freshman year being German I and II in one class, and this year we're in German II, III, and IV. The reason I first took German was because I didn't have room in my schedule to fit Italian II. I had taken Italian at the middle school and I didn't want to be put in Italian I because I knew it was too easy for me. I speak fluent Portuguese and I've spoken fluent Portuguese since I was in kindergarten. I can read, write, and speak fluently. Yet I chose to take Italian first because I wanted to learn something new. And then when that wasn't given to me, that opportunity wasn't open for me, I decided to take German, one of the most difficult languages to learn besides English, as many people know. So to lose this program is a major loss to me. I'm not only losing the opportunity to learn a new language, I'm almost taking, it's almost like the opportunity to learn in general is being taken away from me. I know that at the high school, many students that speak fluent languages enroll in those fluent languages that they're in. Many people who speak Portuguese decide to take Portuguese for the sole sake of getting an easy A. Many students who speak Spanish take Spanish for the sole purpose of getting an easy A. And I, like many of the other students in my classes, take German for the challenge. Take German to learn, to grow, to become a better person, because that's what a foreign language does to you. It doesn't only teach you new things, but it connects you to different people. And although German is not widely spoken here, I almost feel like I'm being taken away the opportunity to go out and learn it even more. In the future, I might lose my interest in learning a foreign language and I already believe that that opportunity here in PBD isn't pushed as much as it should be. These foreign languages that are different, that are new, are offered at the middle school level. But this was one of the main reasons why I came to PBD High, was so I could take this language that would give me almost an edge in college. It would be something different that I could put on my resume. Not only did I speak fluent English, I speak fluent Portuguese, but I also wish to speak fluent German one day. And many colleges ask for a minimum requirement of two years of a foreign language. And I have chosen to take three consecutive years of German. And I have loved the three consecutive years that I've taken of German. It's a part of who I am. And I love when people ask me, "Oh, what, what language do you take at the high school?" And I say, "German." I am one of the few people at PBD High who can say I take German. And I'm one of the few people at PBD High that can say, "I love taking German." Ms. Frank Kieno has brought passion into my heart through her passion of teaching German. She dedicates her time, everything that she has to teach these foreign language, foreign languages because it's something she truly loves. And I know it's difficult to consider keeping this one small program that in numbers shows little success. But I've overheard that twenty-two freshmen had enrolled to take German. And I had already had a meeting with my guidance counselor where I chose my schedule for next year and I had planned on taking German IV. So I please ask you to reconsider taking this learning opportunity for me. And once again, I please ask you to reconsider taking the joy that Mr. Myers has brought into the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open.
My name is Hayden, English Department, High School. Bonsoir, mesdames et messieurs. I speak not in support of anything particular for my department, but as the head of the English Department, I am speaking in support of these most eloquent students who are speaking for German and for French, which are the current languages of English. And I will tell you, those students who know the German and who know their French certainly are able to use those languages to help them with vocabulary and reading comprehension in the English area and to decipher and decode what it is that they are facing when they are having tests like MCAS and SATs and AP tests, et cetera, when they are struggling with the words that are in front of them. We know that because we do a lot of vocabulary study at the high school level, one of the things that we can use as English teachers to help our students access and retain the knowledge of any new words that come in front of them is for them to be able to use their language knowledge, whether it's Portuguese, Italian, Latin, Greek, German, or French, in order to break things down and to come to an understanding of what this word may mean from those languages and to transfer that into their understanding within English. Remember, German and English are the Remember, German and English are the, German and French are the parent languages of English. Generally, when I was in school, what we were told is that 8% of English vocabulary comes from the French language. The basic grammar and all of the one-syllable words pretty much come from the Germanic language. So we're dealing with a cultural aspect in the study of these languages as well, too. And particularly in the city of Peabody, which had such a huge French population, this is a really important concept to consider along with all of the other huge immigrant populations that we had. What did those cultures and what did those languages contribute to the uniqueness that this city has? And the number of language courses that we have in high school is one of the things that makes us a unique high school as well. And so when hearing these wonderful young people defend their choices and their needs for this language, I would say that those of us in the English Department are very much in support of that. And it is something that is very useful within this world for those two languages, German and French as well. In the fields of engineering, the sciences, German, Latin, in the fields of humanities, diplomacy, the developing nations in Africa, et cetera, there is a real need for French. We're having more students come in from West African nations who have English and French as their primary languages. We need to consider supporting through our efforts at the high school and through the efforts from the middle school, that these languages do continue so that these students do have the opportunity for that. Because in many ways, it helps our job in the English Department as well, too, since we are dealing with language, its operations, its tone, its creation of mood, and its creation of the culture that we as Americans have become from contributions of all of these particular languages that we have. Merci beaucoup pour votre attention. Bonne nuit.
Thank you, Mrs. Hague. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open.
This was totally not planned, so I apologize. Good evening, everyone. I have sent many of you emails during the past couple of weeks, so I appreciate the responses that I've received and the conversations that I've had. Tonight, I wanted to take a minute and talk as a parent and as a voter, as a taxpayer, as an alumni of Peabody High School. My daughter is a senior. She has had a tremendous experience in the Peabody Public School system, so thank you to all of you. And I really wanted to come up here and say that. I wanted to say thank you to the school committee currently, to past, to every administrator, to every teacher, to every guidance counselor, every person she's cried to, every person she's laughed with, every person she's celebrated with. My son is going into the high school in September and I want that same experience for him. He's had that experience up until eighth grade and I want it to keep going. And every one of these budget meetings, I get nervous. I defend Peabody High School every single day, on a field, in a text message, in a conversation. It means a lot to me and I know it means a lot to all of you. She's fifth in her class, she's received two full tuition scholarships, she's worked really hard, but she hasn't done it alone. There's been teachers pushing her, encouraging her, there's been deans that have offered support. She has done this with a group of people in our community and I just, I sat back listening tonight to the hardest working people I know. And my daughter's going to school for education. I don't want her sitting on this side of the desk someday fighting for her job. It scares me, 'cause I know she has a heart for this job and it scares me that this may be where she ends up, on the other side of this table. So I just trust that tonight, I know you all have extremely difficult positions, and I'm not saying that lightly, but I just trust that you all have the decisions to make for our students and so, for their future and so that I can continue to with all my heart defend Peabody High School. My kids never applied at any other school, they never had any other interest, and that made me extremely proud. So I just wanna continue that pride. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Brunet. Anybody else would like to come forward? Welcome, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent Vertag, honorable members of the school committee. Tonight, once again, you've heard from parents, teachers, and students. They haven't said anything that you do not know. They've said it in different ways. They've spoken about specifics, about their own experiences, about their hopes and their dreams for their children. They have rightfully so praised the Peabody Public Schools. And we all recognize what a difficult job you have as members of the committee. We all realize that money is the key ingredient. And that's why two weeks ago tomorrow, 30 teachers finished their workday, climbed on a bus, and went into the State House to advocate for more money to fund our future. So that hopefully, the types of decisions you've been faced with over the past few weeks will not continue to worsen. We spoke about our colleagues, our children, but the message that came through to me is that you never know which teacher is going to affect which student or students. And so I'm gonna leave you with two challenges. One, to continue to work as hard as you've been working, and then to join us in the fight to force the state legislature and the federal government to reorder their priorities and fund our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there any, anyone else that would like to come forward at this time and speak?
Before we open it up for a discussion, I wanted to ask, we held off yesterday on making a vote as a school committee to move forward with the proposed early retirement proposal. I want to ask to move forward with Unit A today. I have spoken with the union leadership, Mary Henry, Bruce Nelson, and got approval from them to move forward with the proposal to offer an early retirement package. And I just wanted to mention again, as a city and town, we're not allowed to offer years or to have anything to do with age. What we can offer is a financial incentive to possibly retire for those that have over 20, 25 years of service. Again, that's a personal choice, but that is something that I would like to move forward and offer to our Unit A educators in our system. We arrived at the numbers based on comparisons with other communities that have done, taken a similar action. I don't expect that this will be something that is offered. I've, I've never moved forward with this offer before, I can't remember the last time the city did. It is only for Unit A, it is not for any other employment in the city, but it's an opportunity that would work, I think, this year, and we wanted to move forward with the offer. I did want to ask, we held back on the motion yesterday, I'd like to move forward with it today.
Mr. Miko?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and release that offer to Unit A.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Any comments, hearing none? Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now I'd open it up for any comments, thoughts, questions from the committee members? Mr. Miko?
Just want to thank everybody that's come out tonight, educators, the students. Just thinking back, when I was in high school, I just don't remember, the kids seemed to be more mature and more well-versed in what's going on in the world than when we were in high school, say 30 years ago. So just tremendously impressed with the, the students and just, everybody has to know that we take everything to heart. This has been an extremely tough few weeks for all of us, a lot of sleepless nights, and just want to thank everybody that's come out tonight and you did the right thing and I'm sure we'll do the best we can and certainly take everything under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Pill. Any other comments? Any committee members? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming out and speaking in public is very difficult for a lot of people and I really appreciate what many of you have done. Those of you who got up to a microphone, that's very difficult, but even just coming and being here, your presence is noted and it is important. Budget hearings are always very, very difficult. The budget process is very difficult. The dream of what we want to do with the schools is always just out of reach, it seems, and it's very, very frustrating. I will tell you that going forward, I'm going to work very hard that there is never another budget process like this again. I want to make sure that when we make decisions, we know the ripple effects. And even though one of the speakers mentioned that everything you said was something we already knew, I've learned a lot from the contacts people have made with me, from the information that people have sent to me, and by many of the comments here tonight, and I appreciate that. Learning doesn't just take place in the school buildings, it takes place outside as well. And for those of you who've spoken up and, and spoken out, it is truly appreciated and you have been heard. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
Thank you through the chair of everyone who's here. Thank you for being here. It's just a testament to what Peabody is, that everyone does care about the city, it's a great city. And I echo what Mr. Olimpio said about the students. You guys are great. You, you definitely will be, you're already leaders, but you'll be great leaders in the future. The mayor did mention that there could be a possibility that we could take a gamble on, on an issue and maybe bring back one of these positions. And I'm very torn just by the speakers who came up. Everyone was very compelling in, in what they think we should be, be bringing back. And like I said, I'm very torn, there are four, basically four teaching positions and one administrative position, a dean position, and I think they're all vital to education, they're all vital to what success could bring in the future. I wish we could bring these all back, personally, but if, what we've seen during this whole budget process is we've had to pin one against the other, and that's the worst thing that we want to do here, but we have to. Speaking for myself and this whole committee, everyone here is pro teacher, everyone here is pro kid, we put kids first, we want to see everyone succeed, but with the budget the way it is, unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to bring all these positions back. We'll probably be able to bring, bring one back, so that's a win, but it's still a loss. It's a loss for Peabody. But I just want to thank everyone for being here again, 'cause this isn't easy for us. If, if we had our way and we had the funding and if we had, if things were a little bit different, we could bring everything back, but it's not gonna happen tonight. But thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Miko.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm proud to live in a city with the education system that we offer. You all have a tremendous impact on all of the students that spoke tonight and those that didn't speak tonight but signed petitions, or talking in the hallways, or in the classrooms, or in the streets, or on social media about the difficult process that we're going through. I'm proud that we offer the special education programs that we do. I'm proud that we take ownership and responsibility for every child in this city. The 2018-19 school year brought us some unexpected fiscal difficulties. Some of those difficulties are related to caring for kids in expensive programs. Part of those difficulties are a result of the state changing the rules with regard to homeless and foster transportation in the middle of the school year. It didn't give us an opportunity to budget for that properly. We need to be responsible and budget for those things properly now. None of us in this committee want to reduce or eliminate any programs, we never do. We're faced with challenges where we, as Mr. Miko said, need to pit one position against the other. To speak to the Welsh community, it is a difficult community. It's a community where one-third of your students receive backpacks because of food insecurity every week. We were forced to face a system without reading specialists or without, or a reduction of some Title I support staff. They're both extremely important. I, as a committee member, thought that the maintaining of reading specialists would be more beneficial to the larger school community. I understand it hurts at the Welsh, in particular. We made a conscious decision to maintain the vibrant visual arts department head because that program affects a lot of children that don't necessarily learn in the same manner as other children, and it gives them a reason to come to school. We offer less foreign languages in Peabody than we did when I first got on this committee. I wish we could offer more. One of the worst things we hear is when a child is engaged with a particular program or teacher and we're facing the reduction of that teacher or program. We have the challenge and the responsibility, I think, to look at the bigger picture, even though there is harm that's caused as a result of not looking at the trees through the forest. Mr. Myers was the mayor before the mayor was the mayor in Student Government Day. He's someone I consider a friend. I agree with all of the students that spoke on his behalf today and I, and I give the students that spoke on behalf of other people the most credit in this room tonight because they're speaking for, for, on behalf of somebody else. And as Mr. Miko said, you are already leaders and it's a result of the people that are in this room, everybody in this room, that's taught you along the way. Mr. Nelson's right. We need to advocate at a different level for proper funding for public education. We're limited in what we can do in terms of how much money we're able to spend as a school district. I can assure you that we all have deliberated and deliberated and deliberated over each of the decisions that we made. We're not necessarily happy with the decisions or the outcome of the budget. We're not necessarily happy with the decisions or the outcome of the budget. But we have a job to look at the district as a whole. And I believe that we have put forth a budget that sustains the majority. It doesn't, there are, there is harm that comes from it. There's no doubt about that. But I would like to explore what the mayor talked about, about half hour ago, in terms of some risk or some alteration that we may consider. And would ask if you may elaborate on that at this time now that the public has had an opportunity to speak.
So, thank you and thank you all for your comments and thank everybody who spoke. It was powerful at the last several meetings to hear those that have come forward to speak. Really made an impact on me and I know for all the committee members. And it makes all these decisions even that much, much more difficult. I can't help myself, but I did want to speak regarding the Essex Tech Regional School that I've talked about a couple of times and how it pertains to our city. Because it has an impact on all of our budget decisions and it has had an impact for a number of years. Putting aside the fact that Mr. Hockman mentioned about the governor and the state making a decision to push some costs that were previously paid by the state now onto cities and towns. And that just happened a few months ago. That was completely unexpected. And we had to come up with $500,000 in a matter of weeks. And that's now had an effect on our budget. Money that we will not see and that was not, will not see from the state, nor is it money that we were expecting to be put onto us. And of course, that has brought us in part to why we've had such difficulty, in addition to some other costs. The Essex Regional Vocational School has been something that I've been very passionate, very vocal about. And I'm sorry if those have heard me before, but I want to speak to it again. Previously, we had the Essex Aggie and the North Shore Tech. Between those two schools, we were sending about ten kids per class to those schools. In fact, it was actually less than that. It was about twenty for the whole four grades, so about five per student, five per grade. Now with the opening of the Essex Tech School, we are sending about seventy-five students per class. We are sending, we are paying $5 million, just under $5 million a year to that school to educate our kids. That does not include the $20 to $30 million that we paid and are still paying the interest on for the construction of the school. City of PBD paid thirty percent for the construction cost for that building. To me, that was money that should have gone into our system, should have bettered the programs and the buildings we have here. And if we did not have these, if we did not make that decision some years ago, we wouldn't even be having these discussions and having to make these difficult choices. Even if we kept half those students from going every year and kept them at PBD High School, we wouldn't be having any of these discussions and we wouldn't be having to have these painful discussions and choices. We have wonderful teachers, administrators at our high school. We need to continue to work on our, what we're offering, what we're able to provide. I think we need a new building, which I've been very vocal as well, all the committee members, that we need to invest in a new high school, significant upgrades. We have this beautiful building here that is paying dividends for all of those that have gone through this building. It's paying dividends in our property values and our general reputation. We need to continue that and continue to make investments. You know, it's always difficult when we're making decisions now that affect some people's lives. And certainly, and I know the, our students that came forward today and to hear them speak so passionately, that hurts to have to make these tough decisions. But certainly, we've made a great effort to invest in our city and invest in our education. I think something that we need to continue to do, to be proud of, but also is more that we have to do as a city and as a committee. I thank those that have spoke today. There were a couple of bits of information and things that I had never thought of. Mrs. Brad brought up about the impact it has by adding a teacher late, which is something that I think we were kind of banking on and planning on, quite frankly. Depending on the class sizes and how things will go, which we expect that there'll probably be some increases at the Welsh school. But that, you know, certainly makes me think. My thoughts have been that the high school needs that investment. And again, I kind of leave it up to the committee as to the proper investment. My thought was the dean because I think we need to continue to help those students that need it, that are having some trouble. And certainly, the pressures of the world are much more on the youth than have ever been before. And that's a sad reality, things that I never thought about, certainly when I was in high school, things that now our students are thinking about. Socioeconomic, political, just world issues now that are on top of our students, the social media impact, which is great. Those are things now that just added pressures on our kids as they get older. But it's not something that is an easy, easy decision for me. We met today, just kind of trying to run through these numbers again to try to find any extra dollars that we can find. It is still a little bit of a risk, as I had outlined before at our last meeting, when we talked about some acceptable risks that I thought were worth taking. I think we can move forward with $100,000 in health insurance to take a chance, try to put some of that money back into our system here. And I would certainly advocate and ask for the committee to move forward with that thought.
Mr. Hockman, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All the positions that were talked about tonight are extremely important. I've already said, and we as a committee have said, that these are difficult decisions to make and difficult cuts. I tend to agree with the mayor's assessment and the dean's assessment of their role at PBD Veterans Memorial High School. We have a difficult population at the high school. There are social pressures, there are emotional pressures, there are academic pressures. There are life pressures that kids experience up there that are helped on a day-to-day basis by the work of the deans. It's different than it was when I was in high school or when committee members, maybe except for Mr. Arnotis, were in high school. I've talked about it. I've had firsthand experience. I have a daughter who's a junior who's had a difficult experience in life that was going down a road that I didn't like and I don't think she liked. And it was challenging to work with her. It was almost impossible to work with her. And it was the deans and the guidance counselors and teachers at the high school that made a connection with her, that now have her on the right track. And it took a while, it took a lot of hard work. It wasn't something that occurred overnight. And I give them all the credit in the world for putting her back on that path. And she's one of X. Ms. Maniata spoke last night about, I think it was twenty-three students she identified at graduation rehearsal that may not be in a cap and gown on Friday if it wasn't for the deans at the high school. I would absolutely advocate, and if I'm able to make a motion to reinstate the dean position at the high school, I will make a motion to reinstate the dean position at the high school with the risk or the budgetary alteration that the mayor is suggesting. So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. On the motion, Mr. Olimpio?
Thank you, through the mayor to, I guess, the committee, whoever's here, thank you. When I started teaching nineteen years ago, I taught at an alternative school. They were at-risk kids. In nineteen years, so much has changed. I started teaching with, you know, teaching at-risk kids. But today, every kid, every kid in PBD, every kid in every, pick your city, town, anywhere in the state, anywhere in the country, is at risk. And again, I have to, I'm looking at four teaching positions and I'm looking at one dean position. And if we can only put one back, I will agree with Mr. Hockman. I will be voting for the dean position just because of that fact. Every kid is at risk. And if the deans, if their caseload is 400 or a little bit higher than that, that's, that's the most bang for my buck at this point. But if you haven't been in a classroom in five years, ten years, fifteen years, it's a different ballgame. Totally different ballgame. Every kid is at risk. White, minority, rich, poor, every kid is at risk. And we're going to need some more funding from the state, from the feds. Because otherwise, we're going to be back here every single year fighting and scratching and clawing for every nickel and dime. And it's not pretty. But I will be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olimpio. Any other comments? Mr. Arnotis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few comments. First of all, I do just want to join everyone in thanking you all for being here tonight. This has been one of the most difficult processes that I've ever gone through. And speaking with my committee members who have been here a lot longer than I have, it seems like it has one of been, one has, that has been harder for them in the years that have, previously have. Couple of comments on this motion. I understand it. I appreciate the hard work, the stories and the impact that the dean's position has at the high school. I value that. But I also look at the alternative of the stories that we have heard tonight, the impact of the other positions that we are losing, the reality that we have had a 21% population decrease at the high school since I graduated, which is less than a decade ago. And I know we had numbers regarding the number of referrals that come to the dean position. I understand the value in that. My thought process is that we have many of the resources in that high school right now that may need to be more properly used than they are now. I think they're underutilized. We have a health center that does incredible work that I think needs to be promoted and encouraged and that students need to be welcomed there and encouraged to go there much more often than I hear that they are. And I know we have several guidance counselors, adjustment counselors. I do believe there are enough people up there now to handle many of the issues that we are talking about. And if we're looking at deciding on how we're going to spend $100,000, I know we're looking at the PANS program. I know we have four other teachers that we're looking at. We've had a student here who spoke, you know, spoke about the value of the one French class that we have at the Higgins that have over, you know, eight hundred students who have signed it. We had the eloquent high schoolers who got up and spoke about the impact that history teacher is having. These are tough. And, you know, if it were me, I would combine probably the PANS program, which I believe is in our book, at about twenty grand and another teacher. But that is how I feel about this. So I will not be supporting this motion. And that's where I'm going to fall on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Arnotis.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we have the motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Then I'll go to Mrs. Dunn.
Through the chair, Mrs. Dunn, is it on that same subject? Because I'll hold. Go right ahead. Okay. So I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I apologize for being late. All of you that spoke tonight definitely impacted a lot of things that are going on in my, my mind. The PANS program, the Welsh School, Mr. Myers, so many cuts that we've had to make are very, very difficult. And Mrs. Dunn is right. We don't know everything. When you call us and you email us, you do tell us things that we didn't, that we didn't know. And it does impact decisions. I will say, one of the reasons why I'm supporting the dean to be reinstated rather than a few other items is because the budget is very fluid. And although tonight we're going to pass a number, it's the number that needs to get voted on. And things could change between now and the start of the school year. If things change for the Welsh in regards to numbers, we've heard very loud and clear to make sure that changes before the end of August. We will save ourselves based on the contract because we will not be able to go over that, that class size. So I feel like you will be saved somehow. The PANS program will still move forward. It will be at half, but we're still there. I still have hope that there will be some funding that comes in. The teachers' union has been amazing to go and advocate. We've also just voted for some early retirements. That will bring us some high out, low in. Things could change between tonight and the beginning of September. And those are some of the things that, that I know we will continue to work on. It is a very fluid situation. The budget is constantly moving. There is still hope for some of these things to come back. But with that being said, there is a number that has to move forward tonight because it has to go to the city council. So, if there aren't any other number fluctuations, I'm prepared to make the motions.
Mrs. Dunn, you had a thought, did you want to share this, share that before we go forward?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I want to thank Mrs. Carpenter because she, you did say a lot of what I was planning on bringing up as well. Moving forward, I want to make sure that at every single school committee meeting, we are discussing the impact of these cuts. We are looking into ways to bring back the positions that we have cut. That we make sure that some of the scheduling changes that are taking place now are brought before this committee. Every vote we take, it isn't just finance. We're setting policy. And we also set curriculum by virtue of our policy. And I heard about some cuts that have already been taking place that we didn't vote on. And I want that corrected. I want to make sure going forward that this board knows exactly what we've cut. So I'd like the job descriptions of each of the positions that have been cut and the job descriptions of those that have been put back into the budget. I want to make sure that we talk about this budget every single meeting from now until the next budget. If I have to make a motion, I'll do it. I'm not going to make a motion tonight, but I am going to make sure that that is on our agenda at every single meeting. Because these cuts are very, very serious. And I'm hopeful, like Mrs. Carpenter and the other members, that funding will come through. But it's very, very important. Doing this type of work in a condensed situation that we've done has done no one any service. Thank you.
Well, to that point, I would like to commend our superintendent. She inherited a budget that had some flaws, had some things that had to be worked through. I want to commend her in her first year as superintendent, probably the most difficult job in the city. And I want to commend her and her team for the work that they did, working through some of the budget challenges that we had, we uncovered and worked through during the course of the budget. Mrs. Dunn, absolutely, let's continue to talk about these. But I wanted to make sure that Ms. Murtagh was complimented and her team, Dr. Lord, Tom LaFleur, for their hard work, as well as our principals and our union leaders for really trying to make sure that we knew everything that was in front of us. And this is, this was my eighth budget. And every year, I'm learning more and more about what takes place, the effects that are had on this. I mean, we have between all of us on this board, we have seventeen children. They're all going through PBD schools. You know, so we certainly feel this as well. My daughter was not happy about French being in play during this budget. So it's certainly something that all of us are affected with at home. And very difficult decisions. And that's our job to review in every meeting. And we'll just continue to do that.
Okay. Carpenter, so we have motions here for a 4.2% increase to the Mrs. Carpenter, so we have motions here for a 4.2% increase to the budget of $3.1 million, total of $77,295,393. We have to make those into line items, so would you move forward, please, with those motions?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the salary line item in the FY '20 budget in the amount of $52,937,253, zero cents.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Mertag. So, we need to change, it will not affect the bottom line of 77 million, but we're moving 100,000 from the ordinary accounts to the salary line item. So can you make that motion and be $53,037,253?
53. What's the total number?
937.
937. Right?
937.
53, 937?
Yeah. 53, 937, 253.
No, no. It's 53 million. 037. 037.
Sorry, 037.
253.
Okay, so 53.
That was a good try.
Million.
Sorry, 037.
Can you just read it one more time?
It's just, motions to approve the salary line item in the budget of $53,037,253.
Yes.
$253.
So, motion to approve the salary line item in FY '20 budget, $53,037,253, zero cents.
Yes. Second. Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
So the next item would be to approve the ordinary accounts line item in the budget to $24,258,140, zero cents.
Motion to approve the non-salary, ordinary accounts FY '20 budget in the amount of $24,258,140, zero cents.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion to approve total FY '20 budget in the amount of $77,295,393, zero cents.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Arnottis?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Vote, thank you.